So, hopefully she'll be able to find us if she doesn't have an appointment in the next couple of minutes. Also, we have in the audience tonight some voice captains who are working on citizenship in the community merit badge, so welcome. We're glad to have you here. Yeah, so we're starting tonight with a walking tour of the Center for Technology. I've invited the scouts to join us, and if there are downtime, I would invite you to ask us questions. So, if we're walking down the hall and nobody's talking at us, sorry. Feel free to ask us questions about what we do here. Okay, so shall I turn it over here to you, Bob?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I grab the...
Here.
Well, actually, you're gonna drive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want this?
I have a pretty good teacher voice.
All right, good.
Thanks. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to visit with you all tonight. And before I get started, I wanted to introduce Rich Wright and Carolyn Dickinson, both our assistant directors at the Center for Technology Essex. So, when I was asked to lead a walking tour, I thought that's wonderful, except there are gonna be no students in the building. So, it's gonna be kinda hard to show you the dynamic learning spaces and the experiences the students have at the center without students being here. So, before we go on the walking tour, I just wanted to give you all a few pieces of information and an opportunity to hear from students themselves. Then we'll go and look at some of the spaces. There are more than 16 programs at the tech center, and we're spread out all over the campus. So, it's not a good idea to think that we can see all those spaces. In the short time that you have, it would take me, on average, about... Well, Diane, you've been on the tour.
Yeah.
About 90 minutes to see everything and to talk about everything. Earlier, Rich asked me if I was nervous to stand up and talk to you about things like this. He asked that because he knows... I really don't love public speaking, but I really do love talking about the tech center. It's something that I've been doing for 16 years, and career tech ed, I've been doing for 31 years of my very abbreviated life. So, I hope that you can see the excitement that we have in our students and our facilities. I placed at your table two documents. One is a checklist that comes from the five dimensions of teaching and learning that we are using as a teacher assessment model, and it's also an administrator assessment model. That really isn't the full model, but we co-opted some of the ideas in there. What I'm inviting you to do is take a look at that throughout the next 45 minutes and see if you can see some of the things that we try to see in our facilities and in our purpose and in our curriculum. So, hopefully you can see those come along. The other piece that I have is the kind of data that I like, but I was told very clearly, don't just give them this piece of data. Because although you love it, it's numbers, and those numbers are in boxes, and we can derive percentages and things like that. Folks need to see information in a lot of different ways. So, I'm not gonna read through that, but this data supports the brief slide deck that I have. I think that's it. Except to say, we have CTE student in the audience with us today. Jonathan Paskovich is a pre-tech student, right, with Ms. Wolf?
Yes.
Great. I'm glad you're here. Thanks. So, let's get started. One idea that I want you all to keep in mind is that while we are a school within all the offerings within this district, we are also a school for all of our sending districts. Center for Technology Essex today has 397 total students. That equals 374.99 FTE. I counted that before I came. I count it every day. The reason I count it every day is that drives our income. So, we build our budget around that number. Our IEP number's at 29 percent, 504, 13 percent, 42 percent on special ed plans. Give you a relational number, Essex High School has about 26 percent of their students identified on ed plans. We exceed all of our sending schools in that way. All that piece of information opposite the fact that 32 percent of our students last year earned college credits. 80 percent of our students earned industry-recognized credentials, which make them more valuable in the industry. So, while that's an important number, it doesn't keep us from doing the excellent work that we need to do here. 8 percent is education's 14, and 10 to 11 percent are ELL students. We are 36 percent free and reduced lunch. Our programs. We offer programs all the way from middle school up to 12th grade and beyond for adults. Right now, we have programs within the building for 9th and 10th graders and 11th and 12th graders. Daytime adults can also take part of in our programming. You can see the list of programs in front of you and in the parentheses of the numbers of students that are enrolled in those programs currently. Beyond our academic, our technical programs, we have academic offers. Right now, we counted it, Carrie calls it "butts in seat." We enrolled 799 distinct academic classes this year. Or 21 course titles, 63 sections. The reason we need to do that is we need to make sure that our students are on track to graduate. They are meeting their high school proficiencies. One of the things that I also want you to understand is while there are nine sending high schools within our service region, that's all of Chittenden County High Schools plus BFA Fairfax, this year we have 11 other high schools represented in our enrollments. BFA St. Albans, Harwood, LaMoyale, Middlebury, Montpelier, Mississauga, Peoples, Spalding, Trinity Baptist, which we have students come all the time to us, U32 and Virginus. We have students coming from all over the state. The reason that is, is if a student does not find a program within their service region, they are by law able to tuition into any other tech center in the state. All those students are driving here every day to get here. Our college connections is a big part of our programming. We have 25 course titles currently, which last year 108 students were able to earn college credits. Those dual enrollment programs that you see on the chart are actually transcripted. So, they aren't articulation agreements. Those are transcrutable credits that make it more affordable for students to be able to go on to college. It is not unusual for one of our students to be able to earn as many as 15 college credits in two years while being enrolled at the tech center. So, I included all of the course titles and course numbers and where those are located. So, right now, we have nine faculty who are adjunct to CCV or VTC. We also have some agreements with Winna Culinary Institute, and every so often, we'll send a group of students out to CCV for a day course. Fridays, we send our computer animation, web design to students down to CCV. So, those first gen students get an opportunity to know what it feels like to be in a college setting as well as a high school. You'll see on our tour tonight little signs that say "Skill Tech," "Electrical S-type," this way. All career tech ed centers are charged with doing workforce development within the building. So, three nights a week, we have courses that run in the tech center for adults who are earning credentials in order to be recognized in their workplace or help them to get employment. Last year, we had 245 enrollments across 10 different evening and weekend courses. Those courses run about 30 to 40 minutes. We also have opportunities at the Center for Student Leadership. When we go into some of the programs, you'll see Skills USA banners. That's our main, it's called a CTSO, Career Tech Student Organization. It's about teaching students leadership skills through competition. This is the competition that we go to every year in St. Louis. And is it St. Louis?
Louisville.
Louisville, they changed it. And every year, we place many students in the top 10 in the nation. Every so often, we'll win a competition. We have a student council, Sephar from Essex High School Student Council. Our student council, we say to students, "You are welcome to attend. We do not vote you in, and all are welcome." So, it maintains a rotating group of interested students working on a variety of different committees that they decide what's important. We don't do dances, we don't do Battle of the Bands, those type of things. We do community involvement, student voice. Every so often, we'll have students interested in safety committees and things like that. Finally, every year, we do a school-wide community service learning day. That's coming up in a few weeks. We open our doors, we provide services to all of our seniors in our community, and it places our students in direct contact with those folks. Talked about workforce development already. Okay, so, it's hard to just stand and talk about the program and give you a sense of what the program is. So, we have an eight-minute video that really is just about students talking about their experiences. Once we're done here, we'll quickly walk through the tour. Does anybody have any questions before I press the play button? I know I'm speaking fast, but I know you have an hour for us, and I know my... Great. Why don't you go ahead?
CTE is phenomenal.
You know they do.
CTE is amazing. CTE is giving me a future.
You have so many opportunities, it's hands-on, and you'll actually be doing something you wanna do.
It makes learning fun.
CTE is outstanding and hands-on. Love it.
It's a very welcoming, enthusiastic environment.
Feel like you're actually learning something that will help you later on in life.
I am confident in what I'm going to do and what I wanna be.
Since I have been in CTE, I finally know who I am, I know my interests are, I know what path I wanna take, and I've made some really great friends. I know who I wanna surround myself with, and it's just like a really great feeling 'cause I finally know who I am and what I wanna do in my life.
Once I found what I'm passionate about, that I'm fully capable of doing anything I'd like.
Because of CTE, I know what I'm talking about. I can talk to people, I know how to market myself, I know who I am, I know what I like, I know what I'm good at, and I know what I'm not good at. I know that I can improve on anything that I want to now.
CTE has definitely helped me find myself and find out who I really am and what I actually like.
The content and what I was learning was relevant, so I felt motivated to put this effort into something I really cared about.
CTE is independent. You really have the choice to do what you want and plan out your career.
It's a technical center that offers a lot of programs that can fit anybody's personality.
Doing stuff you wouldn't think that kids would be doing in school.
In building residential, we pretty much built a house from the ground up.
This Net Zero House is a new project for us at the tech center. Not only are we getting the opportunity to learn about how to build, we can get opportunities with plumbing, electrical, architecture.
The first year of CST, you'll learn basically the basic components of a computer and how they all like come together and how the computer actually works. It's really cool.
And we also learn the software and operating system diagnostics and vehicles.
In the first year of Natural Resources Mechanical, we learned about heavy machinery, welding, small engines, and circuits.
In the first year of Natural Resources Forestry, we learned about food production, running chainsaws, how to take care of plants and vegetables.
In cosmetology, some of the things I learned were the basics of doing hair and working with mannequins and getting the customer service aspect down.
In the first year of professional foods, we cover pretty much everything. In a restaurant, students learn how to cook in the kitchen, bake in the bake shop, and manage a restaurant in front of the house, as well as sanitation and safety in the kitchen.
Students in the first year have got, really get a large basis on a lot of different programs. 3D modeling in Maya, video editing with After Effects and Premiere. And after that, we move into a lot of Photoshop work, doing typography and different design. Then there's some programming, HTML, JavaScript, CSS.
My health informatics program has definitely helped me in the right direction of how to be professional and how to go about getting jobs in the medical field.
Health informatics is a money program, and we do billing and coding, anatomy and physiology, and medical terminology throughout the year.
In my first year at the dental assisting program, I have learned radiology, sterilization, and the basics of dental assisting.
Our dental assisting program here at CTE has given me the confidence and all the skills I'll need to go on to working in this field next year.
What I like most about the dental assisting program is that it's a hands-on learning environment and very enthusiastic.
In the first year of graphic design, you learn all the basic elements to graphic design, which is Photoshop, Illustrator, InDesign, Lightroom. You learn all the basic information and foundational parts of it.
In the second year, you get a little bit deeper with client work.
Although you learn from the textbook, it's nothing until you get to know the kids and are playing with them and teaching them.
In the first year of childhood education, we go on career work experiences at daycares, run our licensed preschool, and we learn about child development.
Students in the first year of mechanical engineering and architectural design, we learn how to first put our thoughts down on paper by learning the basics of drawing. And then after that, we get into SolidWorks and CAD programs.
Get in-depth experience using materials, laser cutter, our 3D printer, and CAD software.
The first year of CTE Automotive, we focus on engines, brakes, wheels and tires, suspension, exhaust.
Batteries, charging systems, even working to engine mechanical performance.
I definitely think my teachers are a huge part of what I'm doing and why I'm here.
You can tell that they have a genuine passion for what they themselves are doing and a genuine passion for what their students are doing.
It's definitely an environment filled with respect and dignity. You're not treated as a kid.
They're very knowledgeable, they're very caring.
Do you guys share anything with them, to be honest? They want to see you be successful.
Coming from a small school, it was a little difficult to adapt, but I feel like that it was the best choice I've made.
It's difficult to be in a new school with a lot of people that you don't know, but it's totally worth going because you learn so much.
The hands-on learning at CTE made a big difference for me 'cause I learned better doing than being told something.
So, this program has given me courage, it's given me a sense of community because within the program, I have all these great friends that I never thought I would meet. And I just, it's amazing.
Being in the first year of automotive, you get to go to a career work experience. And I just got off my two weeks of going to the AutoMaster, and I couldn't have enjoyed it anymore. It was absolutely the best experience I've had through schooling my entire life.
We get to go to an off-site restaurant and work within it. It's given me experience that I will need for outside of high school.
It really made me wanna pursue college more, just 'cause it will take you farther in life.
I've had so much opportunities. Right now, I'm getting paid, I'm getting high school credit, I'm getting college credit.
At CTE, you can take dual enrollments with the colleges that are in the line on behalf of CTE. And I got them all without having to pay anything. That was the best thing ever.
After high school, I wanna get my masters in electrical. And from there, I wanna have my own business. CTE's setting me up to learn the skills I need to know before I leave this school.
After graduating CTE, I am planning on going to college and getting my bachelor's in special education.
I'm going to Champlain College for a major in service security and a minor in digital forensics.
When I came here, I realized like this is what I wanted to do, and I never would wanna leave, actually. CTE is my future.
I would absolutely recommend CTE, Angela. It's a really great way to find yourself.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend CTE.
It's definitely motivating me and preparing me to pursue a career in this field.
Reading things on paper or seeing it online, what we're all about, is just a small glimpse of what you might experience here.
You gotta come visit, you gotta try it. Work is not easy, but it is probably the most fun I've ever had in a school building, and I would recommend it highly to anybody.
So, we show that for some parts of it during our admissions tours. Like I said, we build our budget on the number of students who come through the door, so it's important that we get them through the door. And once they see it, they tend not to want to go back to their high schools. It's not for everyone, some folks will choose another path. As we go around, what I wanna point out is that we're not gonna go up the hill, so we won't see building trades programs, there's two up there, or the natural resources programs, there's two up there. And we'll select different spaces as we walk around instead of going into all of them 'cause we've got about 40 minutes now. What we did is we had the Design and Creative Media II class help us design placards that we have in the programs that we're going to step into. As we walk into those programs, if you take a look, we tried to explain our program in terms of the program overview, but also what industry-recognized credentials you can get, what college credits you can get, who the teachers are. And right now, on those placards are also the number of students that are present in the programs. Does anybody have any...
You do imagine that.
You have to imagine the students. Do you have any questions? Yes, community services is a big part of scouting. What kind of service projects have your students... Yeah, that's a great question. So, we have an event in November every year in which we open the center up for two days with the seniors in the community. We coordinate travel for them to come into the center, and we provide them services like tire rotation and basic engine diagnostics, blood pressure checks. Our sophomore-year students usually build something for the seniors to paint and bring away. Last couple of years, it's been a birdhouse. This year, we're gonna do a small planter for them. We do bingo, we ask the Essex High School band to play for them. We have a lovely lunch for them, and it's for two days. We also, the programs that are out in the field, will go and rake leaves, do some, you know, some tree pruning. If there's snow on the ground, which there has been every so often, we'll clear snow for them. We deliver meals on those two days to seniors. It's a great project. In addition to that, we have lots of different relationships with nonprofits in the community to provide them services from our students, like printing or design or repair. We've built handicap-accessible bird watches for Heinzburg down in Birds of Vermont. So, we're, we're, we try to be in the community as much as we can. You're welcome. So, if you're walking, let's walk. If you're not, you can't see.
Outside.
Not outside.
Well, to get some cause.
Oh, cause, we're gonna go over to Cause Two in dental, but it'll be a quick one.
20 feet.
Yeah.
Large driveway.
Right.
Okay, that was exciting and inspiring. So, we're back now, and next on the agenda is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who's not associated with scouts? Okay, great. All right, so, next up is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants pulled from the consent agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of meeting minutes of October 1st, the approval of warrants, and the approval of maternity leave. Thanks, Al. All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Hi, opposing, hey. Thanks. Are we doing anything, are we...
No.
CTE, we did that at the beginning.
They combined it all into one.
Oh, shoot, I just realized I have something on call. Oh, all right. So, next we'll move on to school board business. And we have a few things going on tonight. The first is proxy voting for the FSBIT, VHI, and VSPA meetings. So, obviously, to do this, you have to be going to the conference on November 6th and 7th. I think those are the right dates. The FSBIT and VHI meetings happen at like 8:00 in the morning. So, to volunteer to be the proxy for that, you need to be willing to get up and be there. And then, the VSPA meeting, usually those of us from the same school district try to sit together, but only one person can vote, so... So, is there someone who's going to the conference who would like to do any or all of these proxy voting pieces? Andre, are you gonna go?
Yes, I'm planning on attending.
Okay. Well, do you wanna do, will you do FSBIT and VHI for sure?
Sure.
You'll get up and go at 8:00? Okay. Is anyone else... Is anyone else dying to do the VSPA business meeting? Or should we use Andre for all of it?
You got it.
Andre's dying? Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion that Andre Roy be the person designated to do the proxy voting for the Essex Westford School District at the FSBIT meeting, the VHI meeting, and the VSPA business meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Brendan. So, Brendan makes the motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Opposing, hey. Thanks. All right, the long-range facility planning steering committee charter. So, who's gonna take this on? Brian?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. It was distributed beforehand. The committee worked on it, we made some modifications. This is a draft. The structure is calling for a steering committee that is a little different than a task team and such that it would include Bruce Murdo, myself, Beth, and then the two board members that were appointed as the task team. So, those five become the steering committee. And then you can see the charge, and then the sunset upon delivery of a long-range plan to the board, the steering committee task team dissolves. That's... Everyone had a chance, so I'd be happy to answer questions from your review.
Okay, perfect. Yes, we all had this material ahead of time. So, what questions do folks have? Kim?
I was just wondering if there would potentially be the opportunity for a community member involvement on the steering committee?
The idea is to have, in working with this, is to have large engagements, not necessarily in a recurring administrative role, but in a feedback input role. So, the way that this is often done is that it would have a whole series of engagements of students, staff, and community members.
I have the same question, Kim, and I guess the one concern I have with it not having community members is it seems like when you do have them, you have more people who have bought into the final plan and therefore can talk about it in the community, et cetera. So, was there a specific reason that you decided not to go that route?
We didn't decide not to go that route.
We didn't decide not to go that route. We decided, I think, that rather than put in the charter what that engagement would be, we would kind of solicit the input of whatever consultant we might hire. And their recommendation is how we would do that rather than prescribe it from the outset and maybe not have the best approach. We actually, there was something in the charter that was pretty prescriptive about the number of people and where they came from. And we thought, well, maybe we will do that. We'll just, we'll detail exactly the makeup of that at this point.
It seemed like we were detailing the work of the task team rather than the charter of the task team. So we wanted to sort of get this off and get this launched so that it's actually, it actually has a scope and a design to it. And then the work would then be subsequent with reporting back to the board.
Okay, so at a future time, we should expect to hear them at that time.
I think the board will have regular check-ins, if not monthly more often, and then also involvement in it. There's a, I mean, for an example, to give some, contextualize it, South Burlington's been working on such a thing for the last couple of years. And they've involved really large community gatherings in the course of a, on a weekend and evenings to get hundreds of different inputs as well as surveys and reactions, both thin and thick kind of engagements towards this. So its absence was really to recognize that this is step number one to design and agree upon what the scope is, and then the work of that committee. What will follow in the next few weeks is a request for proposals that will go out for architectural design, engineering services. And also as part of that will be facilitator services.
I suppose we could add a bullet of public engagement to it if you want to make sure that that idea isn't forgotten, which I don't think it will be, but.
It seems like it wouldn't hurt to be, or that that's the board's expectation. I think we trust that that's the community's desire. But I think putting it in writing has probably helped it. Okay, anything else? Other questions or comments? Do we need to take action on this, Brian? Okay. So could you scroll back to the top for me? Thank you very much. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the long-range facility master plan as presented with one addition to the plan. Okay, thanks, Al, for the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Well, this is embarking on some pretty interesting work as we move forward. Okay, next up is the governance task team draft recommendations.
So earlier today, I emailed the board with a draft of the recommendation that the governance task team is working on. And I'm also handing around a page out of the VSPA's services brochure that specifically relate to policy governance facilitation. So the goal for tonight is to not take action on the recommendation, but it's really to get your feedback, your thoughts, your reflections, your reactions, so that our next task team meeting, we can take that feedback and try to incorporate it into the final recommendation, which we will bring back to the ne, to the full board at the next board meeting. So, I mean, I assume everyone had a chance to read it. If not, there is a link in your inbox that you can click on. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions. The members of the task team, just as a reminder, are Keely, Diane, Kim, myself and Beth. With special guest appearances by Martha.
In Beth's absence. So what questions or comments do folks have?
Well, start somewhere. I listened pretty, very carefully to the, when we had our retreat. And it seems to me that there was a lot of concerns and misunderstandings about what policy governance was about. And having attended a few of the policy governance meetings when Essex Town was in operation, I never knew as a citizen what was being discussed and what the implications were. So it's, it's a learning experience for me. I think the big thing is it's a turning of a significant amount of responsibility from the board to the superintendent, delegating more authority. And I think, when I looked at the recommendation, I think it was right on that the board needs more time to define roles and responsibilities, how the board will be monitoring superintendent and school performance overall in a number of areas, discipline, student growth, social, emotional, et cetera. It's a, it's a big swath. For myself, I'd rather, I agree with the recommendation. I think we should go slow. But as we reach consensus in certain areas, then implement those sections where we can. And sort of a measured approach while trying to bring the community on board at the same time.
I thank the team for working on this and for bringing a recommendation that I support so wholeheartedly. So thank you for doing that. I think the focus on, on making sure that the board has an eye on community outreach and engagement and, and especially how to explore and better understand those since we've done a little, started that work. And keeping our eye on making sure that we're doing that and diving deeper is, I think, a really important guideline moving forward. And I appreciate the timeline and the chance to see if it's working for all of us before. I, I really appreciate the way this was delivered and really support it.
Other questions and comments? So I have a question about these first two phases of learning and how, whether you anticipate that happening during regular board meetings or do you anticipate that board members will come out additional nights to do that learning?
Did you have any? So Kim reached out to Val Gardner at the VSPA. And I don't know if that was anything that you may have covered with her or?
No, she just asked when we meet. I think she was anticipating. We asked of her availability for November and December. If it wasn't something that could even begin discovery until the first quarter or later of next year, it seemed like that wasn't what the task team felt would be helpful. So she said she does have availability in November and December and asked, she said it would be important to know when our meetings were. So I think she was assuming it'd be on a regular meeting night. So I responded that we meet the first and third of the month, not committing to any dates or times, but letting her know that either Brendan or myself or Martha or Beth or somebody would be in touch after this discussion to think about what that might look like and the blocks of time that would be required. So I don't know if maybe it would be like a pre-meeting, certainly available to the public to be here. But the way we did learning in the, the past year, in, I think, once a month, we did a book read, basically, that added a little time on one end. So if meeting earlier is harder, then maybe our agenda starts at seven thirty or something to that effect. But we didn't get to any of those details, just inquiring about availability, basically.
Todd and then Kim.
Sure. You know, I guess I like on the first page, the six sort of enumerated goals for good governance. I, I think I'm a little leery of jumping into looking just at policy governance. I think if we were to go with what's outlined here as doing step one and two, I would like to see policy governance benchmarked or compared at least against one model of high-functioning, if that's a great phrase, you know, good governance. So we're not just looking at one thing. We can kind of compare and contrast and then make a decision.
Would that be different than the panel that the retreat offered both?
Yes.
I think, would it be different from what we did last year when we did sort of the two? I think we had Sean come last.
Todd wasn't there yet.
Oh, Todd wasn't there yet, I'm sorry. Okay, we've had a li, I think Keely did a little bit of that comparing, but.
To respond to both Kim and Todd, I think, or I guess Kim was responding to Martha. I think some of the stuff that's outlined in phase two, we won't really have to spend time on, like inviting a board member and superintendent from another board to talk to us. We've already done that stuff.
Yeah.
So I think the part where like a big time commitment is going to be a concern is after phase two, either with implementation of policy governance or with guiding ourselves through improving the formal outline of our governance practices. So to Todd's point, we, I don't know if it was Brendan or Kim who said that part of this, like phase two maybe is to, or I don't know which phase it was, but that some part of the way that the VSPA approaches policy governance training is to give you a scenario and you like role-play how to do it with policy governance. And so to your point, maybe we should also be asking Champlain Valley, like, how would you approach the same scenario? But in general, I think the idea is that there aren't a lot of models that provide the kind of guidance for school boards in Vermont. And so this decision is more a decision of, do we want to go with an established package? Or do we want to do this work for ourselves? Where we'd be calling in outside guidance, but it might be a facilitator or it might be an occasional visit from a variety of experts in high-functioning, good governance that is not policy governance. But we haven't been able to identify multiple package deals, sort of.
I think, I mean, I think what we've experienced is we've met mostly by accident, high-functioning boards in the state. But they have their own sort of traditional history and practices that may be replicable here, but also are not formulaic in the way that policy governance is in terms of walking you through those specific steps. So I mean, it could be that maybe in our conversations with Val Gardner or whoever ends up being the coach or facilitator, they might be able to do a little bit of this during the readiness phase, phase one, to sort of help walk the board through, you know, what are the options? Is it, is it just practicing good governance? Is it policy governance? How ready is the board to make a step into it and to learn more about policy governance? So we could talk and see through this process if we can try to address some of the specific concerns that you have, Al.
For the, I understand you have quite an audience of the scouts here tonight. Brendan, could you, if we could, could we just take a moment to maybe contrast what we are doing now versus what we are considering for this specific audience? So they have a framework. Is that okay, Martha? I mean, just to help them understand what we're talking about and why it's important.
Sure.
So what, I guess what we're up to here is we're trying to decide as a board whether or not we need to work with a prescribed governance model. So in terms of the operation of this board, the way that we operate is simply based on policies that, and procedures that have been developed over the course of time since the new district has been put into operation. And so what we're trying to decide now is, is there a different way that we want to organize the work of the board? And one of the models of governance that we're looking at is called policy governance, which is based on a series of policies that the board makes decisions on. And a lot of the things that are outlined here, one through six, are things that are specifically addressed in adopting policy governance. But we also understand that it's a pretty formulaic and systematic way of approaching the operation of a board. So we also want to fully understand what we're getting ourselves into because it's, it's pretty involved. Either way, this board, I think, is committed to improving the way it operates, whether or not we go to policy governance or not. And so that's sort of, in a nutshell, what we're, what we're acting.
Thank you, Brendan.
So what, um, one of the things that I would like us to reflect on, and now I'm lost, I dream of thought. So Al, I know you had something else to say.
I think that it's really important, that's, it's an important departure from the way that we operate now. And this is a large district by any measure, with a lot of diversity in terms of school, programs, CTE, high school and all, and scattered schools everywhere. So when I look at this district, there's a lot of things that can happen. Once you write a policy, it sort of fits all circumstances. And quite frequently, because there is, it is, the organization is so large that there are situations that come up that just, it just doesn't quite fit. And so administration does its best, from a procedure standpoint, that goes with that policy, to take action. And that is a, is a biggie because you can't write. And in fact, the old districts with all of their policies, I don't know how many policies they were, but hundreds for every little thing. And looking at a bigger picture, I think it's more important that we have flexibility and where we can, within limits, specifying some boundaries, release certain actions that would be taken by the administration. But outside of those limits, then there may be some board discussion. And that gives you a bigger picture of what we're talking about here and why it's so important in terms of the decision for the board, on which direction we go and how quickly. And that's about it. So thank you, Martha.
So I remembered what you was going to say. I think one of the discussions that I would like us to have is if we move in this direction is about who, if we're going to go with policy governance, are we going to be pure about it? Because there are lots of boards in the state that call themselves policy governance boards, frankly, including at least the one who came to our panel discussion, who do the parts that they like, but they keep parts of their old system that they don't want to give up. So I really hope during this, if we move in this direction in this early phase, that we'll have some good discussions about that topic. Keely?
My feeling from serving on the governance committee is that we all were under the impression that policy governance advertises itself as working best if it's adopted fully.
Right.
And that it would not be really worth our time to spend a lot of time learning about policy governance if we aren't committed to doing it fully. That it would make more sense for us That it would make more sense for us to just say, we're designing our own model and we want to take a couple of things that we really like from policy governance than to say, we're doing policy governance and leaving out chunks of it.
Yeah.
Because then we would be spending a lot of time learning about stuff that we had no intention of doing. So that's just my feel of our conversations, but.
And I think the other piece that wasn't mutually exclusive for that at all was that making sure we're mindful of jargon that is, does not make it not policy governance, but that we can find language that works, that is practicing with integrity, but is being thoughtful about how it can be consumed by the community and folks who need to understand the work we're doing. So, um,
That's good.
But but the structures would be, we'd, we'd either decide we want to practice with integrity and, you know, add other layers if we need to go there, but but really doing it by the way that it would be prescribed or not.
I think we're gonna take our leave, but again, we're just taking a course in citizenship in the community. Thank you for your example of what that really looks like. This is, uh, part of the scouting program is to not only teach about citizenship, but about leadership. And so this is a good example of both in action. So thank you for letting us come and sit in and listen to your meetings.
Thanks for being here.
Make one suggestion. If you're learning about citizenship, uh, the high school has hosted in the past naturalization ceremonies. So I'm sure if it's on the calendar at some point in the future, that may be something that these scouts would enjoy seeing where people actually become U S citizens.
Thank you. My wife is actually from another country.
There you go.
Appreciate that recommendation.
Yes, and unfortunately the times were so much ceremonies are usually during school vacations. So I've attended a couple and there's not that been that many students I've attended. I think it'd be something great for them to see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
All right. Oh, Todd, I'm sorry.
I was just curious if the V S B A, because I haven't had time really to go out there, if they offer a similar service or, um, assistance to school boards who say, we need help, but we definitely don't want to do a policy governance, but we need help straightening our act up? Or are they just really sort of focused on policy governance assistance?
So you would figure out, I think, which aspect of role and responsibility you want support with. So it might be policy development, it might be visioning, it might be, so it's a little bit more compartmentalized, like strategic planning, the, um, retreat work. So there are other pockets of the work that they help support. They can, um, I think, get an additional class support, um, like superintendent evaluation. So there's, you know, a sort of a menu of services that can be offered. We would have to be, I think, more specific about what we're looking for because they do offer general training for like new board members or board, full boards together to do, um, I forget what it's called, the essential work of boards is, I think, their, their initial.
It's fair to say the V S B A isn't necessarily pushing advocating for policy governance.
Like they have a consultant that helps with it. So Val is not a V S B A employee, but it's a fairly, um, like more specific training that she trained under the Carvers, I guess.
But they, I would, I think it's fair to say that they brought this model forward as something boards could look at because so many boards frankly were in a far worse place than we are in terms of doing administrative tasks instead of board tasks. Yeah. And they, they did come last year and do a roles and responsibilities session with us, which was helping. So they will do things like that. Okay, so I would say if you have other thoughts or questions between now and our next meeting, you should get them to Brendan, um, so that he has, I think your committee has one more meeting.
Yes, sir.
Before our next board meeting. So who, um, would give them a chance to discuss whatever is on your mind that didn't come up tonight. Okay? All right, so, um, task team updates, Liz.
Uh, I have a quick question. For the proxy voting, apologies if we talked about it already or if I'm misremembering something. Were we supposed to go over the resolutions as well?
Right, so it isn't specifically on here, so Beth and I were just whispering about it. I think we're gonna do it under local and state updates. Okay? Is that all right?
Yeah, I just didn't want us to get to the very end.
Sending you on your own, you just.
Andre has it.
I'm thinking of the table.
Um, so communications, we have a meeting tomorrow, so we will have an update at our next meeting about that. We're gonna be, Martha's gonna join us and we're gonna be talking about board engagement and, um, and communicate, and the strategy for our budget in particular and what we want to do. So we will be reporting back on that the next meeting. And voices, um, Laura and I went to student government last week and met and gave a a presentation to the students about the work that we're doing, especially as it relates to that feedback loop that I talked about last time and working with Beth and Brian and and with the board and students around how we can get a sense of what's happening in buildings. Um, that meeting is happening on Monday night, um, next Monday, um, and we're hoping to get some more students involved in that. So again, I'll, so I'll be reporting on that after, at the next meeting as well.
Great. Questions for Liz? Okay, also under task team updates, I'm gonna appoint an indicators task team. And it's gonna be Al and Kim, to the extent that she can, and me. So we'll be starting to meet and, um, reporting back to the board, Brendan.
So, um, in reading the superintendent's report, I note that, um, Beth is also heading up an effort to come up with measures. So is there any cross pollination between those efforts?
There better be.
Yes. Do you want to talk about that when I get to the report?
Yeah, fine.
The cross pollination. Yes, I expect that will. We don't want to be working at cross purposes, so, yeah. Okay, anything else on task team updates? Superintendent's report.
Okay, so first, as Brian's pulling that up, first of all, I have a correction in your board notes um, that I have to go back and correct. So as I talked about the science assessment, I was like ahead of myself. So the new science assessment was last spring. That's the one that's connected to the science next generation. When I went to reread that, I was like, I just put the wrong date into that and you had it. So I figured this was the best way to correct that. So we don't have, last year was a, the year before last was a pilot. So we don't have comparable data, but we do look at kneecaps and we will still do that analyzation of that. So when we had our kneecap science, it went with the Vermont State standards. And that was still going on up until two thousand sixteen was the last time. But we implemented in teaching the next generation sciences standards, which started in two thousand thirteen. So that doesn't match for what we were teaching and testing, and now it should. And now we'll be able to look over time, but so, sorry about the missed dates after I hit send. Also, um, there's a difference in what was, who was, um, tested before with this new science. It's a fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade and it used to be fourth grade was, and not fifth. So looking at, um, my goals so far this year and we began and have been working with data mapping, I am, the instructional team, which is myself, Jackie Tolman, Erin McGuire, Dylan McNamara, and Deb Anderson visits us at times and she's been helping us to look at this data, which has been super helpful. And I think for her too, to get a picture of instructional, um, and it's giving her a new lens, which is exciting. Um, I did tell her she can leave at any time if we get to, I get like a data geek when I'm looking at data. So if she wants to, but she's been there. So we have begun to really look at the measurable outcomes. We had, as you know, and we shared last year, a boatload of data that we could look at. We've really narrowed that down and chosen two to three data points for each of those measurable outcomes. We have begun on Monday, we took, uh, it was about five hours that we did some work with data and we have another data dive coming up. Um, but we've reached out, like one of them is that our students have healthy choices. So we reached out to food services, um, the co-managers and getting reports on that and working with them to see what data we can look at. So, um, because our measurable outcomes are not just attached to academics and it's really trying to figure out how do we look at, we've been looking at VSAP data and how do we get someone to help us understand that better? Data that really hasn't been looked at, but really ties to our measurable outcomes, so. And then I will be working with Laura and Tilly next Tuesday to plan their coming to leadership team meeting to talk about student voice and student leadership. I was in a social emotional learning team, um, meeting today and was looking at the CASL, which are our competencies that we have adopted for social emotional learning. And there's a section on student voice and leadership. So I was sharing with Laura tonight that it would be great for us to use that with the leadership team. I really feel like we need to define what student voice is and what we all consider it and then how do you measure it? If we don't know what it is, it's really hard to measure it. So we have a spectrum that we're going to use and we'll come up with a pretty active activity for a leadership team to engage them in that work. And then how can Laura and Tilly support that work in each of the schools and go meet with kids? So we'll figure the plan out, but I'm really excited that they're coming to leadership team meeting. So that's the link and it will also give us good data because one of our measurable outcomes is student voice. So that will help us looking at, um, this, we, I expect that the leadership team, one of the activities that I want them to do is to really think about their schools and where they stand defined by this rubric, where they are and then what are some activities that they're already doing and what are things they can be doing? So that will be work that Laura and Tilly will lead with them. So the governance task is the next goal I've been, well, I attended via phone because I was not feeling well and I did not want to give my stomach bug, so my dogs and I were on phone as they were breathing into the phone. And then the next goal, I, it's been really exciting to work on the supervision and evaluation, both models and how well they tie together. And when I'm working with a principal on instructional leadership, working with them around their goals and they're working with the teachers around the standards, it's just pretty amazing. We have been able to, um, I've been doing the hour visits or ninety minute school visits and then I do a one-on-one on top of that at a different time during the month with the principals. The what, the times that I'm in there nine, in the school's ninety minutes, um, has been phenomenal and most of the time the principal is getting into classrooms with me and we're practicing what feedback looks like and, um, using the new standards that we've adopted. I was at Westford today and Marcy, we did four visits and she gave direct feedback right there in the classroom on a computer and it's, the system that we have created is so cool. It's very exciting. Um, and then I'm able to give her feedback on her feedback and what she's looking for in the classroom. So the cycle is, um, been pretty exciting. And we begin our instructional leadership academy, the twelve, um, people from here that are doing that is next, uh, Thursday and Friday. So that's exciting and we are all looking forward to that and doing some walkthroughs together. So, um, we have begun the budget work, looking, um, and calendar, kind of calendar mapped and what we're doing with the leadership team. Brian and I have been working, um, Brian's been doing a lot more, but we're thinking about how do we, we have October thirtieth, after the students are with us, we have a full day with leadership team. And then they have, um, harassment and bullying training after that. So we have them for a long time, but we will do a lot about, uh, about budget and planning and thinking about what, um, our needs are. But Brian is giving them some data through budgets over time to really dive into and to see where we've expanded or some decreased, um, and those will be good conversations. You want to say anything more about that, Brian?
I think we're, we're still working to set that lens and it's through, it's all about student achievement and teaching practices and that's where we want to drive our resources and our investments.
The next section, I just had each of the kind of superintendent's office departments put together a blurb and working with them. I think it's some important points that they've been doing and I thought it would be good for, because um, social emotional learning is new and so is equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I thought a monthly report on the kinds of things that are happening out of our office. One of the things that you're receiving will go home to all families. It's a brochure that Dylan McNamara and the S E L coaches have put together and they've been printed. They are headed home, um, through either parent conferences or sent home in Friday folders or, um, the only place we did not send them home to is the high school and we're trying to figure that out. Do we mail them, email them, which is fine as well, but, um, I'm, I'm really happy with those and getting the word out of the work that we're doing around that. And I think the investment, as you have mentioned, the investment that we put into it, I think it really shows, um, the work. And I have had the opportunity to sit in the social emotional learning and the focus on, in those teams is phenomenal and how it's really, um, changed some mindset at schools.
Good. Todd?
Sorry, I, I just had a, uh, I remembered something or maybe I remembering it wrong. But, um, goal number one, didn't we start some work as the board in trying to determine sort of which data we thought we would want for the C I P goals, but we didn't actually get all the way through it?
So that's what the indicator task team is gonna work on.
Okay.
And, um, trying to figure out what the syndicator should be and, you know, bringing that back to the board as we go.
Right, and I will share this data map and reporting calendar that we will do for the continuous improvement plan anyways, um, with that indicator team. And then we'll work together with that. So do you have any questions about curriculum assessment, social emotional learning, equity, diversity, inclusion? There's also very similar information, just went home, um, or went out in the community family newsletter today. So families are receiving this. I also added a, um, a few paragraphs about our intentions with personal, um, not personal, professional learning communities and the culture that we're creating and it's really on behalf of students why we're doing that. So that also went out to families again. And that focus. And then I just highlighted some areas of the different schools. We will be doing an emergency test tomorrow. We have the new breakfast options available at Essex High School. There is a survey that's been conducted and it looks pretty positive right now coming back through as Brian shared with me a little bit of it today and some other happenings that are happening at each of the schools. Have any questions?
On the...
Yeah.
Things to digest for a family member. And because it's a piece of paper, it's easy to get lost. But notwithstanding, have you considered a video that could be just put online so parents could access it?
Yes, and like the video that we did for the vision. One of the issues with just, it sounds so easy to just do a video, and then it needs to be ADA compliant and to figure that out. So they do take a little longer if we want to do that. But yes, we actually have talked about it for the three different areas that I reported out on, even the work that we're doing around our curriculum and essential standards. Jackie was ready to go jump and do one right away, but...
My suggestion would be for Parents Night, something like that. Something that's running continuous.
Yep.
To try to help inform the parents.
Or links that her sent her.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been getting a lot out about social and emotional learning. The pamphlet was just another way, because we know that, as you have told us, not everybody has internet at home.
Exactly.
So we have tried some other forms to get out there and get in the hands. And it's also something that a teacher can hand a parent and have a conversation, which is important.
Okay, any other questions, comments for that? Okay, so let's do the resolution work. Unfortunately, I had this whole thing outlined, and I left it at home. But Brian, perhaps you can, yes, this is exactly what we need. So hopefully, each of you has taken some time to read the report and perhaps listen to the webinar, which was good, because it explains some of the thinking about the position that the resolutions committee took on each of the resolutions. I think perhaps the most efficient way to go through this would be to look at each one, and if there are folks who disagree with the recommendation of the resolutions committee, speak up. Otherwise, let's just assume that our position is going to be the same as the position of the resolutions committee. So the very first one is about replacing paper towels with hand dryers. Anybody want to disagree with the do-not-pass recommendation? Okay, I'm going to just keep moving. The second one is about social services funding. So this is asking the agency of education to do a big survey to determine what's going to be spent on, what is being spent on social services. And you may recall that the rationale here is that we're implementing a statewide chart of accounts and hopefully, a system, financial system. And once that's done, this information should be easy to access. So the recommendation is not this. Anyone disagree? Okay. This one is about the SU governance language. I think the rationale here, if I'm remembering right, and Kim, jump in if I'm not. I don't have my notes in front of me. The recommendation was not to pass, because there's already work happening in the legislature around this supervisory union makeup question. Obviously, a lot of issues went away during merger and consolidation, but not all of them. This doesn't really apply to us, obviously.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is there's also a construct where to go outside of whatever might otherwise be warranted, it can go before the state board, and they can leave or adopt what is being recommended by the communities.
Right.
I agree with do-not-pass, but I'm curious where they limited only one vote in a district that does not have any teachers. So that goes against membership by population.
Right, but that SU board doesn't have to adhere to one.
Not the SU, but the local board.
Right, but this is the SU board. So SU board doesn't have to adhere to one person, one vote. Okay. This one is about timely release of information and implementation of the charter, a charter of accounts in a statewide financial system. The recommendation is to pass. I would say, yes, please, yes. How many years have I been out of the legislature? One of the last things I did was to get legislation passed that said we would have the uniformed chart of accounts. That was in 2014. So it's pretty discouraging. Okay, let's keep going. Capital spending. So this is basically, could you scroll? Yeah, this is basically asking the state to start kicking in again. I think, given the fact that we're embarking on a study, we would definitely like the state to start kicking in again. Kelly?
I just have a question. Since I don't know a great deal about past practices in Vermont education funding, I don't see a philosophical distinction between this one and resolution number nine, which seem to me both to be saying burdens have been transferred in payment from the state to the school districts, and we'd like that to go back to how it used to be.
Right.
So I don't understand why we're recommending to pass one and not the other.
So capital spending comes out of a different bill than education spending and general fund spending. So this is done in what's called the capital bill. This is money that's bonded, and so it's considered different from the other money. We can talk a little more when we get to mine. But this is just saying, the state used to pay thirty percent of all approved construction costs, and they stopped, and we want them to start paying again. And we don't want it to be predicated on the fact that you need to build because you consolidated.
And I, I had a discussion with one of the architects in the area, and I guess Chittenden County has forecasted that there's going to be a significant amount of capital improvements, just in our county alone, notwithstanding the rest of the state. So I can see that this is a very worthy resolution to say yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, let's keep going. Oh, this just says that, as VSBA is deciding whether to support legislative, legislation and initiatives, what their impact on the environment would be. Seems pretty, pretty easy to support. Okay, dual enrollment. This is pretty specific to just a couple of districts in the state. One is done in the Palat Sandgate area of Vermont. Alperk would be another example, where they have permission to tuition their students to an out-of-state high school because of their location and the fact that they don't have easy geographical access to public high schools in Vermont. So this is saying those students should have access to dual enrollment. Seems to make sense. Okay, all right. Next is unfunded mandates, so...
I think this is spoken to in another resolution that already exists.
And that's right, that's right. We already have, and that's, that's why it said do-not-pass, because there's already a resolution on the books that VSBA has to abide by. Thank you, Kim.
Just trying to remember that. Just came to me.
Okay, number nine. So this is where, Kelly, this is where you had some concerns. So this is something that people like to talk about a lot, is are things, is the state putting things in the education fund to be paid for, largely by property taxes, that are related to the original purpose of the fund? I think the do-not-pass here is largely because last year, they did away with the transfer from the general fund to the education fund. So there used to be a transfer of a big sum of money that was part of the funding in the education fund. Instead, last year, they designated specific taxes that would fund the education fund, so that there isn't a transfer anymore. Now, does that mean that the legislature couldn't still say suddenly, we're going to fund? I don't know. I can't think of a good example, but, well, pre-case of Randy funded, right? Out of the education fund. We're going to increase funding for higher ed and pay for it out of the education fund. I, it could happen, but it's not likely to. Kim, do you want to add anything here?
I think also more broadly, we have a resolution on the books right now that's use of the education fund. And it says that VSBA strongly supports the intended limitations on the use of the education fund and opposes any diversion of funds raised through the state right property tax to programs not within the jurisdiction of public school districts or supervisory unions. So if we aren't empowered to spend that here, then we shouldn't be raising taxes to have it taken to be used for higher ed or otherwise. So it, that more broadly worded resolution is on the books already, and I think it addresses this better probably for the purposes. And that, I think, was part of the do-not-pass.
Wait, okay. All right, let's move on to ten. This is monitoring the outcomes of the forty-six goals. This is actually required by law. This is just saying we want VSBA to push for this to actually happen. Okay, all right. This is... Okay. So I assume that the resolutions committee said to pass this one, because it says work toward equitable taxation within districts that were ordered to merge. The background to this is that Washington Central could not get to a merger, because they were fighting over the fact that some districts had huge bonded debt, and others didn't. Of course, they're not taking into account that they'll own all that asset now. But it became one of the mantras that spelled the downfall of trying to get this consolidation to happen on its own. I would say this doesn't affect us. I think the being resolved is worded brightly enough, so that it's fine. I think if the being resolved had been specifically about debt.
Right.
I would not have supported this.
Nor do I think it would have had a pass from the board.
Right. Okay. Okay. Let's keep going. All right, well, now we have all the pieces of existing resolutions that got changed. Thank you. So look for yellow.
And strike throughs, I think.
And strike through, so go back. There's a strike through, right there. For reorganization. Kim, remind me of that.
Trying to remember, to be honest.
So, what is it? So there's nothing in law that says that orgs can do additional reorganizations beyond the once a year that they have to, right?
That's what I'm recalling.
Right, so they felt like this was unnecessary.
No requirement, you be in the position for a year, there's no...
Right, yeah. Okay. So this first yellow highlighted is just to make this language conform to the resolution that we talked about above on capital spending. Okay? Now, all through the document, they're changing state legislature to general assembly, because that's how it's referred to in law. Waiting, they're asking that this be removed, because the waiting study is happening. So a resolution on waiting becomes unnecessary at this point. So just be comfortable. Okay. Keep going. Okay, and this is... This is trying, this is just making the language in our resolution about federal funding comport with how federal funding actually happens now, as opposed to how it was when the resolution was first written. Okay? This next cross-out about waiting, waiting, no.
You as the ratio.
Ratios, right. And I think they feel like the ratio conversation has happened and done, and this isn't needed anymore. Kim, do you remember what any of these languages?
I think we actually got some proficiency guidelines in what Bob shared with us. So there are some standards or offerings from the agency of ed that speak to proficiency, graduation standards, or something like that, right? Transferable skills, I guess.
Transferable skills, yeah.
Sample graduation proficiencies and performance indicators. So I think in that there has probably been, and this law now isn't a, is supposed to be in full effect, that everybody graduates this year with demonstrating their proficiency and graduation requirements. I think it, there is, there are some broad guidelines, and I think that's no longer, right, relevant. There is, there are some broad guidelines, and I think that's no longer relevant.
Okay. All right, this is just replacing Act one twenty-nine because every two years, there can be a different Act one twenty-nine. So this replaces the numbers with the title of the law. And that does the same thing. All right. Uniform pre-kindergarten entrance age.
This, I think, was related to the fact that pre-K is, universal pre-K is inclusive of five-year-olds, where previously at a, the uniform kindergarten entrance age was five. So I think it no longer, you know, those would be in conflict potentially with one another, because a five-year-old would be eligible under preschool or to attend kindergarten, is what I recall of the video. In all honesty, that's what I'm recalling.
And frankly, I think at this point, there's probably not a school district in the state that doesn't require kids to be five by September first in order to go to kindergarten. I think probably this was written back at the time when some districts were still using January one, and kids would move from one district to the other, and it was problematic. Okay. School timing.
This is related to the common calendar?
Oh, right. And we decided we're not going to have a uniform statewide calendar. Okay. That's good. All right. So they took out this last sentence, as I recall, because they want to advocate for public preschool, and they felt that this language might prevent them from doing that. Okay. All right. I'm blanking on the collective part, can you make it up? Um. Well, that's what I was thinking.
Definitely, I'm thinking too, but I'm not recalling.
The language doesn't really.
Well, I don't think, I think there are plenty of areas in which the VSBA, the VSA, the VPA are able to be collaborative with the NEA. And Act one seventy-three, which is the special ed funding committee, or whatever that group is called, is a place where they're working in partnership. I think this was prescribing that in the resolution, we would be promoting or looking for collaborative approaches. It's not that that isn't something that works in some communities, it doesn't work in all. So I think this is not to suggest there aren't partnerships happening, but the reality is if it's in resolution, it's going to, if it says that we're looking at collaboration when we get to arbitra, or binding arbitration in the statewide negotiations on healthcare, it's really difficult, you are sort of, that's it, your hands are tied and that's that. So it really wasn't aligned with the priorities necessarily of.
What's happening with that.
Resolutions and what's happening around bargaining right now.
Okay.
But there are many places.
I knew you had had something.
Partnerships happening that are moving bodies of work on behalf of students, where all those bodies are working together with the NEA, so.
So that's just changing, don't chuck a behind to Elsa, which is what it is now. Those others are technical. Is that it? All right. You did it. Andre?
Yes.
You good?
Thank you, Andre.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I am copying.
I'm really disappointed. Transportation is not included here.
Anything, no, I don't think so. I think as long as Andre understands the law.
Yes.
I think, okay. Any other local state updates? Patrick? No. Kim? Anything else that I can think of that I can think of either? Other than to say that the talk by the ambassador from Belgium to the United States was fantastic. The students were amazing. The commissioner, Commissioner Secretary of Education was here, and I was really impressed at how many students took advantage of that and were really engaging with him. I didn't get a chance to overhear what they were talking about, which I would have liked to have done, but it was an uplifting couple of hours. Yeah.
I thought too, he was, he was insightful and delicate and very diplomatic.
Very diplomatic. It's a good thing, since he's a diplomat.
Exactly, and I, I thought that that was artful, given the timing.
Yep.
And yet, he also, you know, was fairly truthful in sort of his assessment of the situation without being attacking. It was a really nice role model of how one can express themselves and still be respectful. It was refreshing.
That's good. And there were several board members here and some community members here, and that's good. And I understand that not everyone can come to things like that. All right, before we move to the wrap-up pieces, I would like to talk about the fact that we have an appeal that we need to do a hearing for, and we need to do some training in preparation for that appeal. Beth, do you want to talk about?
Sure. So Heather Lynn will do the training, and the training is around harassment and bullying. So she will give you the training. We'll do that up to a board meeting, so prior to a board meeting. And that, the date that she has available in that, our next board meeting, is November fifth. So she could do that prior to our board meeting. And then the appeal, the hearing, could take place on November twelfth, and that will be an executive session, an extra, not a school board meeting, but a time set aside for the, for the hearing.
What was the date?
November twelfth.
Twelfth.
We'll do six thirty, regular board time.
Thank you.
For those of us who can't get here at five thirty PM on the fifth, is it possible to receive any written materials that we could?
Yes.
Learn the stuff that we're going to be missing to review in advance?
Yes.
Yeah. And then hopefully you'll be here in time when a few have questions, you can ask them. I think, I would suggest that we try to do the hearing itself at the East Office.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's more private and respectful.
Both, right.
Of the student and the family. Okay. So put those two dates on your calendar. Also, right now, I'll just quickly mention, you got an email from Laura today with a survey that she and Tilly would like to have you fill out, and she'd like the results ready for our next board meeting, so if you could do it in the next week, that would be really helpful. So look for that email. Yeah.
The appeal proceeding that will be entertained on the twelfth, that's actually the appeal against the decision that was rendered from the superintendent regarding the incident?
Correct, we have to give a hearing, that's actually the hearing. So you'll hear from administration, you'll hear from a parent.
Right. But this is separate from?
The training.
The training is, the training.
The other type of hearing that's going to go forward, or the court?
Well, that's.
Oh, yes, 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 that's nothing, yes, different.
Totally different. So this is more like some of the hearings we've done, but the issue is. Right. But the issue is around harassment and bullying, so that's why the training.
Different.
To make sure we understand the definitions before we do the actual hearing.
And the training will be here?
Yes.
Yes.
The hearing will be at the East.
East Office on the twelfth.
We'll do the training right over, like we did the book study, we'll just do it on that side, so our ETN can set up and do there. It's open, anybody can.
It's not closed, because it's just factual information.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. All right, so the next meeting is November fifth. I don't know where we're at with board messages to the community, so we'll talk about that tomorrow. And so finally, I've forgotten the three words. Challenges, values, appreciation.
Meeting evaluation, you were going to have them.
Oh, that's right, we switched it. That's right, thank you. So we have to send that to everyone right now, right?
So it's on the board website, on the front page, right underneath meeting material?
Ah, okay. So if you'd like to take a minute to fill that out right now, you can, or if you want to do it at home later, you can. All right, is there anything else before I adjourn the meeting?
Just that Natasha asked for these forms, that I've collected them and assembled, and I'm going to pass them out to people if you haven't yet. Todd, you don't have one yet for this last year.
Here.
And do you want to sign it, or do you want me to?
I'll sign.
You can use my phone.
Since it's a board thing.
I know, but, you know.
I did adjourn this.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, didn't I?
I, I don't think you.
I don't think so.
Okay. We are adjourned, that's right.